Ready when you are.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Little Content School Committee regular meeting of December 8th. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, just to let everyone in our virtual audience know, we are heading into executive session and we plan to return as close to seven o'clock as possible, not before. We will not return before seven, but as close to seven as possible. So I would consider a vote to enter into executive session under R I G L section 4246-5A2 and R I G L section 4246-5A1. And please note that any person who is to be discussed in executive session has been notified in writing in advance of this meeting and has been given the opportunity to have such discussion in open session pursuant to R I G L section 4246-5A.
So much.
Thank you. This has to be by real call.
Holly Allen.
Yes.
Travis Audi, absent. Hannah Air?
Yes.
Frida Kennehan?
Hi. Thank you.
We will now head to executive session. Tuesday.
All right, welcome back, everybody, back to open session. I am going to make a notification that there were no votes taken in executive session. And I would entertain a motion to seal the minutes of executive session, please. So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next up is the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I just have a question on that.
Sure.
Just says, underneath that, it says no homeroom. Under, I didn't understand that. How can you not have a homeroom?
Where are you, Mike?
On the enrollment stats.
Oh, okay. I don't have, I don't have my computer on this. I don't have it on. Um.
Sometimes those are children getting services. Learning services, language, occupational therapy.
Yeah, I do remember.
I know.
Is the preschool, is the preschool kindergarten?
Little peanuts down there.
Nine nine eight is the preschool and nine 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 is the pre-kindergarten. Usually it's triple that, but. Pandemic, the parents are. We want them to send it to.
Okay.
Well, hi. So, oh, I have a motion from Hannah. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, spotlight Rhode Island State Assessment Results 2021.
Get it, Mariah? Sonia and I collaborated on this. It's, it's quick, you know, you, I think everyone knows by now how well stoked it is, but. Just taking a deeper dive, we did sort of. Come up with some, um, really pieces of data that we need to spotlight. Uh, you may add. I think we all know that Little Compton is number five. In the state in terms of. ELA proficiency students and six in math. Um, obviously we want those numbers to rise and we have everything in place to make that happen. So I think none of this is new, but we're going to come to some newer data. That is pretty exciting. Next, please. Um, oh, and this is the growth data that landed us definitely top of mind at Ride. And they were supposed to set us publicly and so forth, but they themselves are managing a lot of change right now. They had a deputy commissioner who will be leaving. She said goodbye to the state superintendent yesterday at, um, our Zoom. And so they've held off on some of their celebrations and so forth. But we have the highest growth in ELA. 14.5% leap there. And number three in the state in terms of math held our own. Certainly, you know, didn't. Lose much, we didn't gain, but we definitely held our own. And if you look at 56 ELAs, we're doing darn good. Yes. Thank you. This is our grade level. Beginning of some of our highlights. If we look at the top there, 82.6%, that is grade three. And that is our math achievement. So 82.6% is pretty high in terms of a proficiency rate. And it is the highest in the entire state for every school that has a grade three. And there are 170. Will the McMahon's grade three math achievement is the highest in the state out of every elementary school.
Yay.
That is super duper. And so this year's grade four, last year's grade three. Our grade four, they were 40%, grade five, 50%, grade, um, six. Seven and eight, we have those right there. We have some work to do, of course. But relative to the rest of the state, we knocked it out of the park. Next. Then we look at ELA achievement and 78.3% grade three are current grade four. Those kids are brilliant. Their teachers are phenomenal. And that proficiency rate right there, 78.3% meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. That's number seven in the state out of 170 elementary schools. This. School, uh, thank you, Mrs. Whip, for your leadership, these teachers, the students knocked it out of the park. And there's the grade four at 56%. That's current fifth graders. Grade six, grade seven, grade eight, uh, grade five, sixth, seventh, eighth. Still have work to do, but those numbers are nothing to sneeze at. Excellent, excellent performance by Will the McMahon, students, staff, and administration. Next. Excellent. So I mean, those just link us to some data with listing all, all of the various schools. Next slide. Now I just want to put something up here. You know, we have Superstars 43. You know, Little Compton. Knows that the value of an education goes beyond state assessments, that's for sure. The effects of enriching, enriching scholastic experience can never truly be quantified. However, we do need objective measures like summative assessments, the state tests to tell us that we're on track in terms of. Supporting all kids in their learning in ELA math and science. So, you know, this is not a community or a school or district that. Values state assessments out of, you know, every data point, absolutely not. But it is worth celebrating when we have the top third grade in the entire state in this little teeny town. We're number five out of 56 in achievement across the board in ELA and six in math. It's, it's really data that we have to celebrate. Everyone has had a hand in it. Uh, not just the Seth's grades, grade three to eight, but also our primary grades. They are our foundational grades. Pre, pre-K, pre-school, pre-K, kindergarten right on up to grade eight and. Yeah, so next. Some superstars in Mrs. Bowley. So those are last year's third graders. And then next one. Next. And to have all the supports in, in place, um, definitely to keep the momentum going. Although some of the teachers are saying, oh, my God, you know, how are we going to top this next year? You're just one year at a time and we have small cohorts, so anything can happen. You know, just move decimal point in, in one grade level and, you know, by the way. And it has a big impact. We have small cohorts of kids. Small numbers make big changes very quickly. Uh, you can't really scale out. So what's been important is our SCL supports definitely for the success of last year. Dedicated faculty and staff engage families. We strengthened the RTI and ETM processes. We have year-round wraparound student services, student support services. Mary Elizabeth is available all summer. Weekly meetings to discuss student progress. We have a learning recovery coordinator. And that was put into place this year. We have additional clinician and most of all, community and a school committee that cheers us on. And the academics, academic supports that are in place, once again, our dedicated faculty and staff engage families. We have aimed pathways credentialing. We're in the middle of that right now. And that is a federal and state mandate and we are on, um, definitely on course to finish before deadline next year. There are ID weekly meetings. We might have lost our coordinator, but the work continues. We may have to postpone a few of our capstone. Components of the ID. Application process, but we are moving forward. There are content to like the monthly meetings now after school. For the first time in, anyone. Can ever, you know, come up with in recent history, uh, maybe in the seventies or eighties, but certainly not in the nineties and two thousands as far as Sonia and I know. We have a middle school math interventionist. So, um, you'll notice our math proficiency rates are lower than our English language proficiency rates. But we now have an interventionist and she's doing an extraordinary job, um, pushing into our middle school classrooms. Our literacy intervention, interventionist also pushing, whoops, and we have a little literacy interventions pushing in slash new co-teaching model. Definitely in the middle school, Jen Giles pushes in and does a lot of co-teaching. So that has been flipped upside down and it's really working beautifully. I'm sure Sonia would agree. We also have a federal and state mandate to implement high-quality curriculum programs in school. We're definitely fine with math. We just had an audit and. At that to the state and we have expeditionary learning. It's now called EL. We're implementing that this year and so far so good. There have been math curriculum enhancements, plan board. For the first time ever, the school has a digital plan board just for every teacher. And all the teachers have had a lot of training, never enough. And, and that way pacing, you know, pacing, the curriculum is important. If you. You know, if March comes along and, and you haven't been able to get to a certain lesson within a unit and our kids are assessed on it and they were never exposed to it. So pacing is very important. Most schools don't really focus on that, but. We are, and we also have cutting-edge technology for equity of access to resources thanks to Jonathan Gabriel and his Air Bones. So I mean, these lists could go on and on, but I just wanted to highlight, um, that the social emotional. Support for kids, families and teachers as well as academic supports and the support of the community and the school committee. It's all converging beautifully and you have a school here that is. Knocking out of the park, unlike the Red Sox this year. So, next. That's about it. Just quick and. It was shocking to see that our third grade, the state does not make it easy to drill down with the data. It is, Sonia would agree, we, you know, it's so frustrating. But we both took, you know, a few hours to look into the data and when that grade three started to pop, I looked deeper and deeper and. So this is Bowley, Ms. Tino. They have the highest achievement data in the building. They will get a letter of congratulations from superintendent. And a copy will be put in their personnel file. And that's it.
Awesome. Terrific. Thank you to, um, everyone involved, the teachers, students, administration. Thank you so much.
I was just going to say, congratulations to the teachers and the students and, um, to the leadership as well to achieve those numbers in a pandemic with all the stress that. They were under and are still under is amazing. So congratulations, everyone.
That's astounding as well. Yeah, I mean, it is astounding. It's, it's so wonderful to hear this news. Small numbers while it can affect measures very easily. It, it also, the small numbers. Really has helped to produce these results because there's more one-on-one engagement with students and their families. There's more active engagement from our teachers with the students. And so I think that is one of the clear strengths of this school is our small cohort.
I agree. So, and there aren't many studies that show a cor- you know, correlation between small class size and higher student achievement. But definitely the SCL component, the support in place. That kind of wraparound support. Let's face it. It is important when kids are progressing in their learning, especially during, during a pandemic. When they're wearing masks and they're at home sometimes a week or two or a month at a time quarantining. Yeah, and. It's been a pleasure to look at the data and not all superintendents are saying that in the state. Or all principals, but you can say that here.
Yeah, congratulations. Good work on everybody's part. Update on stage two, Will and Man School Educational Facility Master Plan. Stage two of the Capitol.
And then you can join in too. Members of the building committee attended the November 18th town council meeting. Our school committee chair, Paulie Allen was there, architect Phil Conti, I was there, John McNeese there. After all of the various public forums were held, uh, the $12 million wish list, pilot sky wish list. Was refined to reflect 14 essential projects for a total of about 4.9 million. Less at least 35 to 45% reimbursement. Tonight, we hosted Dr. Joe De Silva of the, we're on Department of Education's School Building Authority, their. Architect there. We sat down with him. He looked at the 14 projects. He looked at the guestimates in terms of cost. Uh, he looked at where they would fit in regarding some of the incentives, health and safety, educational enhancements, et cetera. And he said, we're in really good shape. Um, we gave him a tour. He was involved in the $11 million renovation about 10 years ago or so. So he knew more about the building than I did. Taking him to the kitchen regarding the stove and the dishwasher, the equipment that's missing in there for a decade. He said that we could be reimbursed for those. We weren't aware of that. So it was a really wonderful visit by Dr. De Silva. And he also noted that when it comes to submitting invoices for reimbursement. That John McNeese has forgotten more than most business managers. Know about the process. So he said, we're in super good hands. On the design and engineering side with Studio Jade and excellent hands with our business manager to get as much money back. Through this process as possible. So if you take that 4.8, 4.9 million and less 45% minimum. Where we're going to get a lot of great things going here in the school. It's already terrific. From the 10, if, if the project from 10 years ago and we're going to make, you know, we're going to go from good to great. More flexible learning spaces, possibly taking the court to nowhere. He was very much in favor of that. Turning it into an outdoor learning space. Um, he's in favor of. Apportioning some local capital, local funds for some new furnishings. Things have changed so much in just 10 years in terms of modular components. Uh, anything you would like to add, Mr. McNeese?
Yeah, one of, one of the things that we, we talked to Dr. De Silva about was the housing aid reimbursement. And, and they have incentives now and there'll be three incentives, bonus incentives that we can get. Our base reimbursement is 35%. We can get an additional 5% for health and safety. We get an additional 5% for educational enhancements. And we can get anywhere from two to 4% in energy savings. Uh, I mean, in bonus incentives. So a maximum would be 14%. Realistically, a minimum would be 10. More than likely, we could probably squeeze out the, um. Energy incentive at 2%. So we could be. energy incentive at 2%. So we could be looking for an additional 12%. What right has is you can't get any more than half of what your base incentive is. Our base incentive is 35. We could get 17 and a half percent max above that. So, so I think at, uh, at 12%, we'd be, we'd be doing well. There's some planning to maximize that because, um, and, and some of the projects that I've done in the past and, and Dr. De Silva has, um, discussed that again this evening was that if you do the whole project, rather than doing these individual projects that get the incentive, you can wind up getting that 14%, 12 to 14% on the total project. So your savings, uh, could be, uh, that much, much higher. So for example, in, uh, in Lincoln, where we just finished a, a major, uh, high school renovation. We had, um, we had our administration in old school. So by moving our administration over to a, a area in the high school, which they were going to demolish, we then had what they call newer fewer, which was an additional 5%. So we got that 5% on a $65 million project. So it was like a $3 million plus savings. And it cost us about a million seven to, to build, uh, the fit up for the admin, of which we got housing aid on that as well. So the net cost was probably, uh, less than 800,000. So that'll be kind of the, the, the struggle that we'll have is trying to get this done or get the projects that we really want to get done and maximize the, the housing aid incentives. But hopefully we'll, we can work on that and get the town on board. We had a pretty good meeting with the town council. I must admit it was, uh, it was, uh, surprisingly.
That's being kind. Yes. Um, yeah, that was so positive and.
So the energy referring to the two to three percent on the energy, that's only on future builds or future projects only, or is that?
That would be on, uh, those projects, like if we put in a solar panels and we use, uh, a PV system on the roof, wind up getting that, that 2% on the whole project, if we incorporate that into one of our projects. Now you can do, uh, a lease purchase on those where you don't have any money out late for the, uh, solar energy. So that you can wind up getting that in there, getting the incentives. And then after 15 years, you wind up owning the, the project. So there are ways that we can finance it without having to upfront the cash. So, but that 2% would not only be for that energy savings, it would be on the whole project if we coordinated.
So we did an upgrade on all the lights in the school. Is there anything that we can go back on on that?
Uh, no, because that, um, that energy savings, and, and again, that's the reason why we're doing what we're doing now. Because you, you need to get that pre-approval from ride in order to qualify for the housing aid. So that's why, uh, any energy savings that will build into this project will, will make sure that's in, in the project, the total, the total project. So that if we do it, we do have the ability to get those, um, those incentives. But for example, on the, on the PV system, you know, I, I, I don't know whether they did any structural testing of the roof back in 13. You know, you gotta look at shadowing, but you know, there are a lot of things that the architects are gonna have to, and engineers are gonna have to look at in order for us to kind of present the PV as a viable project to ride for, for reimbursement. But that I think is a, is a good option where we may not have as much cash outflow if we structure it right. So.
Any more questions? Thank you all. Um, health and safety update related to ride and RIDO protocols and initiatives.
Excellent. Uh, I volunteered of Sonya was there to at the November 12th clinic. And I certainly can't say enough about the little Compton next part volunteers. The kids were given swag bags upon arrival and joined snacks and beverages and fun activities organized by volunteers during their observation period to make sure that they're safe, that children felt safe and supported in the individual private booths that were set up for the vaccinations. They were entertained and engaged in the cafeteria during the required, um, that work period. Fifty-five first shots were given on November 12th and 42 second shots last Friday. When I went to the pathicary for my shots, the doctor did tell me that lots of little Compton kids did take advantage of their pediatric vaccination clinics. And then our families have also told us that they, they did jump the gun that week, uh, before the 12th in November. And they went to CPS and other places and that is absolutely fine. The next step in, um, working with RIDO on our kid's safe is test to stay tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Sonya, Jean Dunn and I will be participating in a webinar that is required if we want to implement test to stay. And test stays part of RIDO's push, uh, to continue with in-person learning, to just be know how important that is. And even though the department of health is prioritizing vaccinations and, um, so are schools. We recognize that there are unvaccinated kiddos out there. We don't want them to miss out on learning opportunities. Vaccinated kiddos do not have to quarantine under most circumstances. Unvaccinated kids do, and this would allow the unvaccinated kids who are eligible to stay in school and be tested every morning. And so, uh, the next in the process is we have to review the test and stay playbook. We've been doing that on and off. We have to review, sign and submit the test to stay MOU similar to the, uh, rapid testing MOU. And we have to complete and submit a test to stay implementation plan. We have the deadline looming. We RSVP'd for tomorrow's webinar. We'll be all set. Now, students who participate in the test to stay, um, program must get identified of close contacts of a school-based case. Cannot be a case from outside of school. So if a child is, um, exposed by a relative or, you know, anything that's not school-related, uh, that contributed to that particular transmission, or that particular close contact, um, but as not eligible for the test to stay program. Ride and RIDO, I was on a Zoom yesterday. They are looking for at least a 70% vaccination rate in schools. That's ambitious, but the way this, you know, virus is mutating and so forth. They definitely want to push more clinics and hopefully we'll have some of, some more of those, um, after the holidays. And that's about it, but I can't emphasize enough, it's due to school exposure. Those are the only students who will be eligible, cannot be at home or sports beyond school, et cetera. We did reach out to, um, the department of health. Sonya, Jean and I last week had asked if we could extend this to grade seven and eight because, you know, we have relatively low vaccination rates. We're, uh, considered a cold zone as far as our, you know, 12 to 14 year olds, um, are, um, they, with their vaccinations, um, hitting maybe 58, 59%. And we were told no, the whole point of test to stay is to encourage families to get their kids vaccinated. And, um, so if we extend it to seventh and eighth grade, you know, that would definitely be counterintuitive and counterproductive. And we would not be eligible for the program. They will not approve that change. We also wanted to consider testing, uh, we're vaccinated kids who are close contacts. And that was, um, definitely shot down yesterday on the Zoom that I was on. Ryan and RIDO said, nope, the transmission rate for vaccinated kids is so low, it's negligible. And we did ask for that data so that we could share that with our families. So, um, unvaccinated kids, we cannot vaccinate and we cannot test our vaccinated kids out of an abundance of caution if they're close contacts. But just know that health and safety are top of mind every day. District and building administration and our COVID coordinator team done, my goodness, I can't say enough. So that's where we are. We are committed to implementing this and we have pre-approval. We're going through all the steps. We will have, we will have it in place, um, before long.
If I may, thank you so much to you and the team for, um, sticking with this. I think it's a valuable program. I just have a, a question on the cost of the testing. Are the tests free from the state? Are we paying for the binax?
That's, that's the next piece of all of this. We are currently getting all of our binax through, um, the state. And we send one of the EMTs up every week. Uh, he sources that for us. We, so we've had no issues at all with our weekly screening. Obviously this will ramp up the demand. And so we'll, we will have to wait and see on test and stay in terms of costs.
And then of course, the additional work, um, are we staffed to handle this?
Jean Dunn is reasonably certain, given our numbers, that she can manage this. She will push into our breakfast area, you know, and, and do some of the testing. We still haven't, you know, fleshed it out. It's, it's in draft form. We'll know more tomorrow when we go, uh, and, on the webinar. And, um, but our team is reasonably certain we can pull this off, uh, with our existing human resources and without, um, a huge financial, um, dig. So let's take that down again, adjusting processes that are already in place. We did very carefully review the manual and try to figure out if it was possible and Jean did feel like, you know, it was something. We're not gonna have to dig too deeply into our pockets. No, that's, that's our guestimate.
We know you'll keep us posted.
We will. Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
We are committed to implementing it for unvaccinated kids. We want to keep them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Next, human resource updates.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I only have very quick items, two of them to report this month. One is that we have rolled out the headspace application for staff members' personal use. And the second is that there is now an employment opportunities page on the district website. Where you can get information on how to apply to be a substitute teacher, assistant, nurse or custodian. And if there are any coaching opportunities, they will also be there. We are still looking for coaches, correct? This is Whip.
I, yep, there are a few names in the pipeline that I need to touch base with you about.
Excellent. So basketball coaches hopefully will be reported to you soon. Great. Thank you. Next, um, finance report, Mr. McNeese.
Madam Chair, the, um, you've got the November 30th, uh, financial statements. And I've included the first projection of the year and it is showing, um, approximately a $20,000 deficit, but like watching you that this is very conservative at the beginning of the year. And if you read my financial reports from last year, you'll know that it's usually pretty conservative because there are some expenses in there that I know we have, we're probably not going to extend. But I just want to make sure we don't have something that might arise during the year. So I will leave that budget number in there. So at this point, um, as I go through the, uh, individual items, I don't see anything that is, um, or, or indicates that we may have an issue in the budget, uh, going forward in this year. So you look at our, our district tuition, obviously with the placement, uh, high school are locked in uh, on that one. So we're, we're good. We won't see a fluctuation on that compared to budget. Uh, we probably are doing a little bit better, but not reflective in my projection on some of the other out of district tuition. So, uh, so I'll refine that projection as we go forward. But I think at this point, um, things are, are going fairly smooth in, uh, this year according to budget.
Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? All right. Committee reports. Um, policy committee. First up, we have a couple of policies further down, so I will defer to the action items. Portsmouth liaison report.
Not very much to report this month. Um, they're still, Portsmouth is still conducting their, um, analysis with the Equality Institute. And they're expecting that that report and its findings will be presented to them. And sometimes within the new year, um, January around then. As I reported last month, their bond referendum went through. So they are gonna continue to talk about their plans for construction, which they, um, are crossing their fingers to start in summer of 2022. They're just, um, last I heard was they're still waiting for final approval from the K to 12 council. So I am sure I will be hearing more about that at their next meeting, which I believe is December 14th. And it will be held at Portsmouth High School instead of the town hall because they're doing, um, they're highlighting all of the buildings in their district. So the next few meetings will be at the various Portsmouth school buildings. So I'm excited to be back at PHS in a few weeks and see how it's looking.
Nice. Thank you, Hannah. Um, town recreation committee. Yes, yes. At a recent town council meeting, a unanimous vote to approve the submission of a grant request for $191,000 to improve the tennis courts. Yes. Uh, so it's 80/20 funded 80% by the state. We'll resurface the tennis courts, fix the drainage, put up lighting. I mean, Merry Christmas, everybody. Nothing left of the bill after all the grants and everything, right? Right? The most exciting news I could have for you this Christmas. Thank you. Stay full of surplus. Thank you, Rita. You're welcome. Wellness committee.
There's nothing more to add at this time.
Welcome. Thank you. Discussion items, discussion about the frequency of school committee meetings. This was, um, requested by Hannah. Hannah, do you want to read the discussion?
Sure. Um, so I had just offered this as something to think about because, um, I believe last month we had a discussion about the chair's role in asking the attorney to represent us in other meetings, or there was something about whether or not Polly and her role as chair is supposed to do that. And so I had suggested that if other members were more comfortable being involved in those decisions, that maybe we consider meeting more frequently. But I think the discussion we had about the subject, we concluded that the chairperson is completely within their rights within our bylaws to do what the situation was that we discussed this under.
Great. Um, I would like to add though, that, um, anytime we have any kind of, um, event concern, vote, anything that we need to have a special meeting for. Um, I'm not opposed. No one else has been opposed. We've had multiple meetings in a month aside from all of our subcommittee meetings. So, um, if anyone ever feels like there's a need to have a special meeting or another meeting, please come to myself or Lori. And, um, if it's something, um, urgent, we will certainly try to make it happen. Any more discussion on that? I'm super public input. So anyone have any public input at this time? Okay, so, um, I'd ask you just to identify yourself and your, um, address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Pablo Villaluer. Uh, I live in, uh, I live in Providence, but my daughter lives at 88 Orange Road in Little Compton, Rhode Island. Uh, my daughter is a fourth grade student here. She has gone through over McMahon, uh, since kindergarten all the way through. And, uh, she's a happy little girl. She loves her class, you know. And she's a happy little girl. She loves her class, you know, she loves, she loves learning. She loves her friends. And she loves being a good girl. So a little bit about me. I'm 40 years old. I didn't grow up in Rhode Island. I grew up in Massachusetts. I went to Dartmouth College for undergraduate. I went to the University of Maryland for law school. Was formerly a law clerk. Was also a teacher, believe it or not, for, and currently I'm a lawyer. I'm an attorney. I worked in, I worked in Providence. So that introduction aside, the reason that I'm here is that I think that the school committee needs to rethink its mask mandate for our children. I would like to respectfully ask that you get rid of the mandate and that you do not any further require our kids to wear a mask while they're in school. It's my opinion that the benefits of wearing a mask in Little Compton do not outweigh very severe costs that our children are suffering as a result of wearing a mask seven hours a day, every day, every week, week after week. And it's coming on year after year. This is the third academic year of being impacted by masks. I have here a number of documents that I'd like to share with the committee. And the first document that I'd like to refer to is a report from the United States Surgeon General. It's a, it's actually an article, a New York Times article referencing the and the Surgeon General's report came out yesterday and the results are reference in that report is should be startling, should be very startling to this. Emergency visits for mental health issues just in the last year among children has gone up 51% just in the last year compared to the year in 2019. Children globally, but certainly here in the United States and in Rhode Island, children are suffering symptoms of anxiety, depression, and other related mental health issues. And a big reason that they're suffering these mental health issues, ladies and gentlemen, is because of these masks that we're forcing our children to wear. I understand. I know, believe me, I know that there's a mask mandate in Rhode Island. I, I'm fully aware of it. But the governor is not, our children, my daughter, and my, you know, the people here, the other children in this, in this school, those children do not belong to the governor. Okay, they don't belong to the mayor. They don't belong to, they belong to us. And they belong, they live here in Little Compton. And we need to look at the community of Little Compton and what the numbers in Little Compton are, are reflecting with respect to the coronavirus pandemic. And we need to think about what these politicians really, when they craft these mask mandates, they're not thinking about Little Compton. They're thinking about Cranston East. They're thinking about classical high school, central high school in Providence, and Salkin High School. They're the schools with, with, not with nine, 10 kids in each classroom, but with 20, with 30 children in each classroom. Schools that are located in urban settings with dense populations, with very little access compared to what we have in Little Compton. Very little access to open space, fresh air, to distance between our neighbors. Okay, they're urban settings where kids have to take public transportation to get to school. Where they encounter, just in their everyday lives, over the course of a week, they might encounter dozens or hundreds of people in their day-to-day interaction with each other, all kind of. Not so in Little Compton. My daughter spends, she spends 95% of her time with the same 10, 15 people every day, every week, every year. And that's, when, when the governor passed his mask mandate, he was thinking about the densely populated areas that might be more at risk than, than, than our kids here in Little Compton. I have the latest statistics for coronavirus for every single municipality in Rhode Island. And Little Compton's numbers are, there's no pandemic in, in Little Compton. There's 271 total cases in, in Little Compton compared to Providence, 38,000. The rate of COVID-19 per 1,000 population, it's 7,000 in Little Compton. So every one, every 7,000 people on average gets infected with coronavirus. In, in, in Providence, the number is three times, three times, it's, it's three times more frequent. It doesn't, there's been, the, the rate of death in Little Compton is, it doesn't even calculate. It's such an infinitesimal decimal point that it doesn't even register in this chart. When this pandemic is finally over, the world would be, the world, the world would be lucky for the numbers to look worldwide, for the numbers to look like they look in, in Little Compton right now. The benefit of wearing a mask doesn't apply to Little Compton because there, there is no benefit to incur. The numbers are already sufficiently low. We've escaped. We're blessed to be where we are. And we should take advantage of that and not make our children suffer by wearing masks over and over again for no reason. The costs, and I have, I have lots of articles that I, that I'd like to to, to share. It, it, it just, it just doesn't make sense why we're, why we're forcing our kids to continue to mask up when the, the costs are so high and the net benefit is so low. One of the things that I'd like to share with, with the, with the, with the committee is a study by the Brown University Study. It's, it just came out earlier this year. And it tracked children over the course of children who, you know, right at the start of the pandemic until the kids were born, right at the start of the pandemic, tracking them now till, till today, and comparing their, their, their learning, their brain development, and their social skills, their social skill development compared to kids who were born at other periods of time. And it's startling. It's a startling, startling scientific study that shows that children, the only, the only, the only difference is, is the mask wearing, that their ability to learn and their brain function is, is compromised because they are not able to see each other's faces. They're not able to see the teachers' faces. And so those are the, those are the mental health and those are the cognitive skills that are, that we're developing a deficit for our children. The, there's, so there's mental health, there's physiological, there's physiological issues that, that children are. When you're wearing a mask, you're breathing the carbon dioxide. You're not, you're not, you're not, you're, you're causing a physical harm to our children by imposing this mask mandate because children are breathing in the same air that they're forcing out. It, it, it decreases, children are, children are little, they need air into their. I, I, I find it remarkable that I have to explain this to very intelligent people.
Sir, I thank you for all your comments. We would welcome any information you have for us. We usually allow about three minutes of, yeah. But you're more than welcome to either send that information to us, either all of us, or you can send it to Mariah, our secretary. She will forward it to us. You could give her paper copies. She can make copies for us and get it all to us. But I appreciate your comments.
And just to wrap it up, no more masks. Enough is enough. We're, it's all, let's, let's, let's move off of the mask and let our kids, it's, that's my point. And I thank you very much for your attention. All right.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments at this time?
I do not see any right now.
Okay, great. Okay, on to action items. We have the COVID-19 vaccination requirement policy is on for the second read. I would consider a vote to approve this policy. Second, any discussion?
Yes, so as you know, we have the, we're going to be, after the new year, we're going to be coming up with the high school process of picking a new high school for our kids. And in years past, have come and done presentations at the, at the school gymnasium. So basically, what this is saying is that, and that could potentially affect a lot of families. Because if we do a multi-year deal, so kids that are in fifth grade now could be, could be affected, or fourth grade, if we do a 10-year deal. So my, my point being is that there's a lot of people that could be affected by this policy. So what this is basically saying is that you're not going to allow somebody to come into the school for a presentation for something that's going to happen in the future if they're not vaccinated. That's what this is saying.
That is what this is saying. This also has a March 31st date as a revisit.
We have a deadline to notify Portsmouth by June 30th. So all those presentations have to be done prior to that. So to say March 31st is not going to be enough time to be able to do, to make, to revisit this and then to be able to still do, still do the presentations by June 30th.
I am sure that presentations can be done on Zoom as well.
And I'd say too that I don't, I don't think we would be, I think you're thinking of the big, like, community-wide forum where we go through all the plans and discuss with the public which plan they like. And they ask questions of any and all the different people who submit in our FP, or is that where you're specific one, or are you talking about all of the meetings? Because I think in terms of our, when we, you and I sit down to have our subcommittee meetings, this forum that we've been conducting them at, all of our policy subcommittee meetings, all of our regular meetings will be sufficient. And then that big community meeting, probably, I don't envision happening until maybe April or May, which is when we will have already reviewed this policy and updated it in light of hopefully more positive scientific knowledge. If that puts you, I don't know if that puts you at ease, or I just another, like, thought of the timeline.
Not, not, not at all. I am definitely not in favor of this. Vaccinations don't, vaccinations to require us to, to tell somebody to have their vaccination when it is not 100% proof that they're not going to, they can't, somebody that's vaccinated can still transmit the disease. I think that discussion's been beat to death so many times. So for us to sit there and tell people that you have to be vaccinated to come into us, to your public building, I'm not in agreement with. I'm also not in agreement with, if you don't change this and you just come back and you say, well, we want to leave it the, the way it is, and then you go have the, these public forums, why should we be leaving those people out of something that's going to affect their kids in the future?
We're not leaving anybody out, though, Mike.
Well, yes, you are.
How? We have Zoom.
Because you're denying, so if we have a public.
Participate on Zoom, just like these people. We have two people who have their hands raised on Zoom right now. Why can't people do that during our sub, our high school subcommittee meetings?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when the schools come down and they come down and they do presentations for us.
We will have them present to everybody. We will have a presentation like this. We will have.
If that was the case, then we should, maybe we shouldn't have gone for the extension of the high school. If that was the case, because at, at the time was that we didn't want to do, we didn't want parents having to pick schools going through, through the Zoom process. That's why we did a one-year extension so that we could get the full feel of it. People can come and see the presentations, come and see the different schools.
I don't think anyone had a crystal ball at the time, and I think we had all hoped that we would be in a, in a different space right now, and we're not. And there's a lot more unknowns and we need to move on. So.
I think what's most important, though, to highlight about this policy is that aside from the visitors, which I can understand is a really divisive group of people to consider making policy for. But this policy also covers subs, non-union employees, contractors, presenters. I don't know if you read the Friday night memo, but there was a presenter who came in to the middle school on Thursday, who's checking if these people are vaccinated. That's what this policy is for. I'm more worried about the fact that we passed MOUs for all of our unions and are requiring our teachers and our admin to be, I'm sorry, not our admin, this would require the admin to be vaccinated. Our teachers and our support staff, we require them to be vaccinated. But we allow subs in this building. We allow contractors and presenters in the building that aren't vaccinated. I think that is a little hypocritical of the committee if we don't pass this in light of our other and what we voted for.
Just so everybody knows before they start throwing daggers at me, I'm not against vaccinations, but I think it's a personal choice.
And so this policy does not force anybody to get vaccinated. All it says is if you are not vaccinated, you will not be permitted in the building during the school hours or any school sanctioned event. This policy will then be renewed at the end of March, which is well before you and I will ever have a huge community forum in the gym about a high school contract.
So basically, you're prohibiting people that are not going to be vaccinated to come into the school is, is what, is what, what it comes down to. So at our last school committee meeting, we had talked about that, how the arts, the plays were, were going to be coming back. And the performances are going to be coming back. And it's my understanding, it's from the fifth grade and up right now. So any of those performances that do come, that, that happen, I'm not sure when they are scheduled to.
Exactly.
If their, if their schedules be performed before your March, the end of March, what this is saying is that a parent cannot come see their, their performance through Zoom. They're not going to be able to come see their child perform.
I think you're missing key points of that conversation, though, Mike, because it was, yes. Because when it was talked, discussed that we were going to have plays and concerts and events, it was going to be first and foremost, just like graduation has been conducted for the past few years, they're going to try their best to do them outdoors. Which then, if it's outdoors, anybody can come. There is no policy requiring vaccines to be outside. I think we need to do what is prudent in protecting our students. As Lori presented, we do not have a high percentage of students who are vaccinated yet. And we need to protect those students and protect the unvaccinated staff members in our building.
The vaccination, if they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, they can still transmit.
It's a lot less of a transmission rate, though. Yes, they can transmit. But the amount of particles of, that you transmit, it's at a lot lower percentage when you're vaccinated. Also, if you're vaccinated, the risk of you having a very severe case or dying from it is lowered. I'm not sitting here saying that vaccines are going to protect everybody 100%. I'm, we all know they're not. But like, we've been sitting here every month telling everybody that we need to layer our protection. We need to social distance and wear masks and be vaccinated in order to see us through the end of the pandemic. We need to follow through on that and make sure all three levels of protection are in place for the non-union employees, the contractors, and the other people who are listed in this policy.
Again, as the numbers were presented to us tonight, our numbers are very low. I think, if you recall, many months ago, I said that back then, that our numbers for our town and our cases have been very low throughout this whole pandemic from the beginning, have always been low. So.
What does that have to, what's the point there, though?
Because basically, what this is doing is you're forcing someone to do something. Yeah, you can shake your head, no, but you are.
This doesn't say get vaccinated. We're, we're urging people to. We think it's the safest thing.
You can't come into a building to come in and to see something for your child. And the only way.
In the building right now, Mike, though. Who's coming in the building right now?
Mrs. Whip, do we have any presentations planned, any, any of that public, public-ish events planned in the next couple of months that you know of?
Nothing really substantial at this point. And like, by and large, you referenced the presenter that came in last week. He was indeed vaccinated. I mean, most people are sharing that information with us, particularly people that are presenting. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just, we are still in the midst of a pandemic. We have a new variant. We don't know enough about it yet. Let us continue to be as cautious as we can. Let us remember, as Dr. Lang told us at the last meeting, 57% of adults in Little Compton are vaccinated compared to 92% overall in the state. Fifty-seven percent of adults in Little Compton are vaccinated compared to ninety-two percent overall in the state. So let's just remember those facts from the science and let's do the right thing. And for the record. As my father would say, as the mayor of East Providence years ago, for the record, I want it stated. That I am so appreciative in this committee. And this town should be appreciative of the effort that the policy committee has put in. You have had multiple meetings. You've actively engaged the community, active listening. You've taught, you you've listened, you've created a policy that I think. Is reasonable, it's sound, rational and safe, and I'm wholly supportive of it. Thank you.
Any more discussion here in in this room?
I could just add one thing from from being on the policy committee. I think I think Sean was actually the person who made a really good point from that. And and like you said, Duane, and nobody's. Nobody's doing anything right now. Everything is shut down. Um, this isn't intended to limit anybody, I believe, is the way you put it. Um, this is doing the opposite of what most districts are. We're we're trying to open the building back up here. But to some of the events, I believe, I believe the way the play is being planned right now, that would be an outdoor event, right? Um, I don't think this policy would exclude us from being able to have something like that high school, community event. Were it to be outside or at another location entirely, um, it's really just about protecting the population in this building. While they're here.
Thank you. Let's take some. Zoom questions, please.
Start the top. Okay, Catherine Matrum, if you can unmute yourself and state your full name and address, please.
Hi, Catherine Matrum, twenty-eight Oak Forest Drive in Little Compton, Mass, Rhode Island, zero two eight three seven. Is that enough? Did I unmute to say?
Sure, fit.
All right, um, well, I'm highly disturbed by the fact that if Little Compton has a fifty-seven percent vaccination rate yet. We have incredibly low rates that we're talking so seriously about excluding people from our schools. And where we have on the table that we know that the vaccine minimizes the effect of COVID nineteen for the vaccinated person, but it's not designed to stop. The spread of COVID nineteen. And the Center of Disease Control even says that if you're fully vaccinated, you can still become infected. With COVID nineteen and its variants and spread them to others, even though the rate is lower. It's still spreadable if you're vaccinated. So can you help me understand how requiring parents, caregivers, contractors, people who have jobs? In this community, in the town, who are really committed to developing a community here where we can support our children and our families? And have a thriving community, how, knowing this information, can we? Ask people not to come into a building if they're not vaccinated? When the vaccination doesn't stop the spread of COVID? Can you help me understand that? Because I don't know what I'm missing here.
Sure, um, thank you. Um, I would um, also suggest maybe. Checking out our last committee meeting. We had a doctor come and explain a lot of this, but.
Minutes, but I didn't see information. Is there a recording somewhere?
There should be.
Available on Board Docs if you go to the last um, regular meeting.
Yeah.
If the Center for Disease Control is saying that if you're fully vaccinated, you can still spread COVID. How is the school committee able to supersede that? Like, are you more qualified to make that choice?
Um, no, but we have, um, we've listened to doctors, the CDC, other organizations. And while you can still spread it, we believe that the. The possibility of spreading it will be less, the severity will be less, and. That is how we came up with this policy, that our main goal is to keep our students safe. Then, you know, then our teachers and our staff, and we really um, would like to see more people in the building. Than there are now. There is very limited, and this would hopefully allow some more people in the building.
And if I could, I would really suggest that you watch that last meeting if you can. Because Dr. Lang, a well-respected pediatrician in this state. She's the president of the Rhode Island Medical Society now. And the top three things she recommended we can do is vaccinate, mask and socially distant. So it's it's really great information and it will help you to perhaps understand what's happening here.
Shannon Mitchell, if you can unmute yourself now and state your name and address.
Good evening. Shannon Mitchell, forty-one Old Main Road, Little Compton, Rhode Island, zero two eight three seven. Thanks for taking the time to do this. I appreciate everyone being over there and, you know, all your efforts. Um, I'm mom of three boys. Alexander has been in that school since kindergarten. Kale has been in that school since kindergarten, fifth and eighth. I have a son that is in a private school and is most likely going to stay there. He does not wear masks. He is, uh, he's five. He is not vaccinated, just to paint the picture. Um, I am so disappointed in how this has been handled over the years with Wilbur McMahon. I think that people have to really start to think about the big picture in six months from now. I remember when, I mean, we pay, so many people will say, oh, Little Compton, it's beautiful. The school's great. Both complete facts. But there's, there's something missing here. Like, we live in a small town with twelve children in each classroom. Dr. Lang, like you said, is an amazing, I've I've heard amazing things about her, but how about having somebody come in that handles mental health for children? Like, what is going to happen with these kids four or five years down the road? Because we can't take these masks off, or, you know, now you're telling parents that they can't come in. Fort Barton School had a book fair. People that ran it are not vaccinated. They had COVID tests done. And submitted them before they did the book, the book, the book fair. Doing something like that, that's fine. Having a card on file for every single parent in Little Compton is absolutely ridiculous. I can't stress it enough. You have to draw the line someplace. What people choose to do with their own bodies is up to them. What I choose to do as a parent is up to me. You know, you you can't segregate and say, oh, well, they can't come in. No, just take a COVID test and say that it's negative and then they can come in to a play. We're not talking like we're packing people in like Gillette Stadium. We're talking, how many children are in that school at this point? I wonder if the school is prepared to lose thirty, forty children. Because I can promise you, there is going to be some kickback if we continue going down this path. It's not healthy. It's, it's just, it's not right. And I really hope that teachers will lose their jobs. I know teachers that have left because of certain things. Great teachers, too. Amazing teachers. Yes, the school, the stats are great, the education is beautiful. I love all the the teachers, but you have to understand that you live in a town that's not like East Providence. You don't have the population like it is down here. We have to understand that that's what what we have is what we have. Two hundred and seventy children at this point. I mean, the school will close eventually, and that's just the reality of it.
Thank you for your comments.
Amanda Morton, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
I'm at twenty Potter's, twenty Potter'sville Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I actually had. A couple of questions in regards to what Mrs. Mitchell said about the test and stay. It was a little difficult to hear between like you guys wearing the masks and some shuffling of papers. So for the test and stay, did she say that it doesn't apply to seventh and eighth graders? Or it does apply, it will apply.
Amanda, it's Mrs. Mitchell. I'm speaking. May I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, we did contact Principal Whip, Jean Dunn and I, we are the COVID team here at. The district and at the school. We contacted RIDO regarding our desire to roll in grade seven and eight. And. It cannot happen at the state level. They will not approve our participation. If we roll in grade seven and eight. And also verbally yesterday um, on a Zoom. And so, you know, it is meant to be implemented K through six. And they have um, their rationale for that. They want to continue to encourage seventh and eighth graders to get vaccinated. And so um, when Test and Stay was first piloted, if you remember, October fifteenth, I pushed out a community. Update regarding that, and you and I.
We just talked about it.
We have discussed it since then. And right when you and I were discussing it a few weeks ago, was when the pilot, um, the data was available. The state approved um, the program to scale out to any district that was interested. And wanted to go through the process. It's it's a pretty rigorous process. We've already started it. So. It does not apply to grade seven and eight. So if a student is in grade seven and eight is not vaccinated. He, she, or they cannot participate, and that is not coming from this school. We wanted to expand it. It is coming from the state.
Okay, and then the other thing is, is um. Do you have achieved tests for the first and second grade? The achievement test scores?
You mean state, uh, state assessment starts, start at grade three? They start at grade three.
So do you have any type of testing that you guys, that you guys are doing for first and second grade?
Absolutely. There's benchmarking. We use iReady, uh, their suite. And it definitely syncs up with um. The learning standards that we are required to um, focus on in our instructional program. And um, Principal Whip could speak to that, but yes, we do benchmarking at the beginning of the year. And we continue to do those interim assessments, uh, two to three times more throughout the year.
Okay, and the last thing is, so I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting that you guys had. Um, in regards to not being allowed in the school if we are not vaccinated. Are you allowing the, you know, if we get a test prior to? If if it's a negative test, to be able to enter the school?
That is not currently in our um, policy.
Okay, so I just, I'm kind of confused and I'm, I agree with Shannon on this, in that this aspect. I actually work as a, I work for the Tiverton High School. And they're implementing, if you're not vaccinated, that you can test. Prior, you have to do weekly testing and submit it. It has to be a PCR in order to, you know, continue to work in the school. I just don't see how, number one, I understand that you guys are like. You guys are trying to do what's best, but at the end of the day, these are our children. And we should have the right, we do have the right to determine what we think is in the best interest for our our kids. And the fact of you not allowing parents that are unvaccinated and people who are unvaccinated enter the school. Is not, it it's it's not right. And to be act, in in all honesty, it's against HIPAA regulations to even. Ask anybody their vaccine status. So I just, I really don't think that anybody on here has the clinical background. Or education to even make a decision like this. This is something that. Everybody really needs to think good and hard about because there are a lot of parents that are probably going to take their kids out of the school, and then your numbers are going to be even lower. And it's a really good school, and I think it's really sad that these kids are going to be affected. I mean, how do you think the kid, I know my son, who's in second grade, he's been affected through this since kindergarten. How do you think he's going to feel if they go to do something at the school or I have to pick him up? I'm not even allowed to go in the school. I can't even step foot in the doors because I'm not vaccinated. Like, my husband was actually going to go and coach basketball for the school last week. He volunteered. We went through everything, and because my husband's not vaccinated, he can't coach for the school team. But yet, yesterday can coach for the recreational team. So Little Compton, Wilbur would have had a basketball team with a really good coach, because my husband's coached Tiverton Junior Basketball League for about seven years. And won two championships. So now they don't have a coach. They're looking for a new one, and he's going to coach for recreational instead. So I just think there's a lot of contradicting going on, and again, with all due respect. You guys need to take into, take into consideration what the parents are saying, because at the end of the day, these are our kids.
Thank you, um. I appreciate your comments. I would like, um, Sean, could you just comment on the HIPAA?
HIPAA is not applicable here.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephanie Kavanaugh, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Kavanaugh. I'm at sixty-three Old Stone Church Road in Little Compton. So I just wanted to um, add on about this policy. I am a board-certified occupational safety and health professional. I currently work in six different school systems in Rhode Island and Massachusetts and three major pharmaceuticals. Two of which are extremely pertinent to the discussion that we're having. At none of these facilities is proof of vaccination required to enter, including all three major pharmaceutical companies. Uh, I'm looking at other school systems in the area. Providence Public Schools in their elementary school are hosting in-school events with families. Socially distanced, max masks required, but vaccinations are not required. I am not discrediting the work that this committee has put into this decision, but I urge you to look at what these other schools are doing. What these major companies are doing. Um, again, looking at these pharmaceuticals where proof of vaccination is not required to enter. Currently, the Occupational Safety and Health Administration's Emergency Temporary Standard regarding weekly testing requirements and vaccination requirements. Enforcement has been suspended while it's being tied up in the courts right now. So again, I just, I, where I'm going with this is just really urging you to, before we act on this this evening. Look into these other schools and take that information.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Andrew Ryan, if you can unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yeah, Andrew Ryan, forty Pageant Brook Road. Um, I just wanted to to come in and thank the committee for their work uh, on this uh, process and and. And having the foresight to try to implement policies to uh, make our school a safer place for our kids and and allow more people to enter the school. I'm always disturbed by the amount of misinformation I get to hear at these meetings. Um, and so I would, I would, I'm glad the committee had a, had a physician come in and give some comments uh, at the last meeting. Uh, but I would, you know, I would urge the committee to, and it seems like the commit, most of the committee understands that vaccinations. And thank goodness that we have polio vaccines and and measles vaccines, and those are required for kids to to enter school. So we don't have measles outbreaks or other things happening uh, at this current time, but vaccines reduce transmission of disease. And that's how they break pandemics. And if you look at vaccinated populations, they have five to ten times less the infection rate than unvaccinated populations with COVID. And they have a much less rate of transmission. And and my college that I'm a professor at is a great example of that. Ninety-five point eight percent vaccinated students. We have almost no cases on campus when we have a five percent or. Or six percent positivity rate all around of us. And our, I can promise you, our college students are not. Uh, hanging out in their dorm rooms all day. They're 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 out and about in town, uh, you know, they're socializing. And and we have a very low case rate because of our vaccination status. And I would encourage you to continue to pursue uh, public health measures that protect our kids, and my kids have thrived in school. Uh, the masks do not bother them at all. Uh, we, we are lucky that they've had masks on when they have been in contact with people with kids who've been positive. Because uh, they have not gotten COVID from their friends who who were positive. Uh, and and that's largely due to the fact that our 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 friends and our kids are smart enough to wear masks. Uh, when they're indoors with people. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and we have a second. Is everyone ready to vote? All right, um. All in favor? I opposed.
Opposed, no.
The policy carries um, three to one with one absent. Thank you. Um, next up is our wellness policy. I would um. Through a motion to. Adopt the wellness policy. So moved second. Any discussion? I went over this at the last meeting. Um, this was to clean up the policy a little bit and to clarify the actual committee. Um, and the makeup of the committee.
Satisfied.
Okay.
Extraordinary work. Thank you.
Um, all in favor? I opposed. And carries. Consider, discuss and vote to approve any requests for information from administration and or legal counsel. Anyone have anything? Oh, any other questions or comments from anyone? Now's your time. I consider a vote to adjourn.
My motion, yes. So moved.
Thank you. All in favor? opposed. Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.